All right, so welcome everyone. This is a meeting of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee. It is Thursday, July 22nd, 2021. It is 7:08 PM. We are meeting here in the PVRS Library. This meeting is also being streamed live on Facebook. So I'm calling the meeting to order now. We do not have any citizens here in attendance for citizens' comments this evening, so we'll just jump into our business. So first on our agenda here is the outdoor building project. So I'm not sure if Mike or John, if you want to just provide the framework here to begin our discussion.
I can, I guess, say a couple of words first. So the outdoor project grant was awarded to the district last August. As we know, the school committee did not vote to approve the funds until this spring. The project did have a project supervisor that was hired, first week in January, if I'm not mistaken. Project supervisor met with the budget, or the Building Subcommittee and Grounds to start the process of doing this pavilion. Of course, with the grant funding not being approved and procurement officer not being included in the process, we had to start that process over late in the game. And even though it was late in the game, I don't think that we were provided with the correct information or regular information that was necessary to really move this project in the right direction early on. So with that being said, I think not getting information timely, meaning prices, location of the building being approved, you know, through either the fire chief or even the Building and Grounds Committee, that kind of hampered the process. So here we are tonight. We did get the final quote from the company that was supposed to put this project up for us. The school committee had voted on a budget for that process. And when we received the contract, which was actually, I believe, July 7th, or July 8th, July 7th, we received, I believe, the contract. And then we received a second contract with an added cost. The added cost was for design and of the structure and engineering, and then have it approved by the town. That was going to be additional $6,100. And early on in the Building and Grounds Subcommittee meetings, we were told by the project manager that we were going to save $10,000 to $20,000 in design fees because we had a basic design that they had created. And we received it, the school committee, when we voted on it. Project manager displayed that and also showed where the building was going to go on the layout of the land here. So my issue, I guess, was we were told that we were going to save $10,000 to $20,000, and then we end up getting another contract for $6,100 July 8th, which is late in the game. And that was originally part of the problem in the onset, was we were always told it'd be next Monday, next Wednesday. And that, it just, it was a way of information to get the process going. So we've got the contract, and I think it's important that Fred Dupre go over and highlight the issues, where we're at, and why, speaking with Fred, John, Julie, and myself, why the project was ultimately stopped.
Yeah, so the basic problem is you didn't get a final contract from them. So you got a contract, but it didn't have all the cost in the contract. So the figure that was given was total contract price, $45,183, and the design and engineering was an additional $6,000. However, attached to the contract was clarifications. The clarifications indicated that, first of all, this wasn't a firm figure, that once they had in all their information from the design and engineering, that that amount could change. And I assure you, it wouldn't change downward. The second is that there was no ADA walkway or ramp included in the contract price. That could have been anywhere from $7,500 to $15,000 additionally. Plus, they did indicate that there's a changeover provision. So if anything had to be changed in the contract, there would be an hourly cost that's fairly typical, but also there would be essentially a 25% surcharge. So instead of being, you know, $4,000 for added costs, it suddenly became $5,000 for anything that's added to the contract, which, by the way, I haven't seen in most contracts. You don't get this 25% surcharge. They set upon the completion of the building permit plans, the entire project will be Then it indicates that there could be requirement of additional site work, and that, of course, would be an additional cost, so the site work would be whatever it costs plus an additional It does not have any electrical scope included. I didn't know what you planned to do with electrical scope, who would do that, and what the cost would be. And no ceiling finish was included in the client's request. Also, the posts apparently were changed, and that was going to be treated potentially as a change order. So my estimate of the cost is not $45,000. My estimate would be closer to $75,000 to $90,000, based upon all the things that they listed as potential changes in the contract. So I only got involved in this project, one, to give legal opinions, which I gave a few during the course of the project, and a final review of this document. And when I saw it, and I was told that you wanted to keep it at $45,000, I said it's not going to be close to $45,000.
How was this procured? I mean, was it advertised in the Central Register and on comp buys and all the things that are-
I didn't do the procurement on it.
Well, I have a question for John.
You're talking about hiring the project manager?
Well, I'm talking about how did we get this quote?
Quote?
Yeah.
So we, there was a project manager written into the grant, and then that project manager came as a recommendation to our principal, Kevin Burke, contacted Fred to, you know, to see if it was posted as well. I didn't see any applicants, I didn't see any applicants that were posted.
That's interesting info, but how did we get to this?
It just came back to me. It's not in the Central Register, the way it was done.
Not the project manager, but this $45,000 plus pizza?
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to now. I believe what they did was, and John can speak to it, I think they attempted to contact at least three vendors-
Right.
-that could perform this type of work, you know, under the regulations, because the project cost was expected to be under $50,000. And they were getting quotes from the three of them. Only two apparently were interested in doing the quotes. And this was the low bidder-
Right. There's a third attempt at the quote. There's a third attempt to get a quote, but that didn't happen. It was the low bidder that was then voted on by-
See, typically, this would not be treated as a big project.
Well, it is construction, and construction is so stupid in this state for a municipality, that any work over $5,000 requires a written agreement.
Right, they have to have a written agreement.
Any work between 10 and, I'm sorry, yeah, 10 and 50 requires publication in the Central Register.
No, it does.
Yes, it does.
I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know, I gave various-
I'm doing a pavilion right now, Fred, and I've got professional accredited FurCog bid specialist respoon feeding me stuff I've learned and forgotten twice.
Well, I did the project at Franklin Tech, and I've done projects involving $200 billion. So I do know the procedures and protocols for going through the Central Register. I worked with Debbie Anderson, as you know, who is the head of the office for the procurement laws. And in this particular case, for the dollar amount involved, it required three quotes. The problem is, we didn't get three quotes, and the basic problem I had was not that process. The problem is that we couldn't construct the building anywhere close to the funds that you apparently had available. So I've been in projects like this with small buildings, under $100,000, where we'd have it done in two months. And we wouldn't run into any particular difficulty in doing it.
So I just want to remind everyone to raise their hands, so that way I'll be scanning. I think, Mike, you had your hand raised. And then Alan, and then Robin.
So as far as the cost of the project, at the first Building and Grounds meeting, we were told that the grant was $101,000. And we asked the question, project manager cost, $20,000. Greenhouse cost, $9,000, and some other stuff. So we were under the impression we had, you know, probably $75,000 to do this project. Well, I made some phone calls the next day, found out that we had $35,000 budgeted for this project. And when we had the next meeting, and I brought this to light, then we found out that there was a big shopping list with not enough funds to cover everything. And one of the main things was, we had $35,000 budgeted for the project, and we were spending $20,000 on a project manager, which was, you know, separate in the grant. So they said, yep, $35,000. Then we saw an estimate of $45,000. Then we ended up adjusting it to the $40,000, and when the school committee voted, I specifically asked, do we have enough money for this project? Yes. Okay, you've got enough money, $40,000. And that was, in fact, not the case, because then we had to come back, because the lowest bid was $45,000. So then we came back, and we got approval for the $45,000 from the school committee. And of course, you can see, it's $45,183, so we're over by $183. And then we got a $6,100 price for building and design and engineering. So we asked, the Building and Grounds Committee asked the questions. We asked it over and over and over again, and we were told, yep, that's enough money. But what bothers me is, we also asked the ropes course. If we don't have enough money, what's the, we're going to have to pull from one of those lines in that grant. Yep, ropes course was the last to come in, it'll be the first to go. That's what we were told. Well, what really bothers me, we had a school committee meeting, and we didn't know that we weren't going to have enough money for this project. But we used rural aid money for that ropes course. And I want to know, in the grant, how much, how much under the line item for ropes course is coming out of the grant money? Because I didn't see it listed in the amended grant, and I think the full ropes course is coming out of the rural aid, which I think was 12 grand. So if we knew, which I think some people knew, and they wanted to make sure they got everything they could, but I don't see how they figured this plant, this project was going to move forward. We don't have the money to just add another $30,000 out of the school budget. So if we had the ropes course money, we would have been a little bit closer, because that was supposed to be last in, first out. And that's, you know, separate from this contract. But to shed light on how we got here, we just, we were, I don't know what you want to call it. We were led down the wrong path, and I was not happy. That's why I asked time and time again, and other Subcommittee members asked at those meetings, you sure you've got enough money? And we were told that this was, we were going to be okay. I just don't like that we took money from rural aid for the ropes course, when that money could have, could have been used for this project.
So I'm backing the bus up to try to understand. I was under the impression that the administration knew about the grant in January. We didn't actually approve the grant until, I think it was April, the school committee approved it. Being in construction, I mean, school committees don't normally approve grants, but being in construction, I think that was appropriate, and they should. So we had a project manager that got on the payroll, and I was under the assumption that the project manager would be doing what a project manager does, and overseeing the aspects that we have to this, including the bidding of this, or the, or going out and soliciting. I would expect that the sole authority on that would have been our business administrator or director, who is required to, you know, as a procurement officer, to be putting these things out and soliciting quotes. My recollection was, is that one, it put out the ad to looking for, looking for this, I think it was a project manager. There was not a response to it. Some of the someone knew suggested that they take a look at it, and this person came forward, and it ended up being the project manager. My concern was, if we reached out to one, we should have reached out by phone to a few others that might be interested in this, so that the sense of fairness and the sense of, you know, doing fiduciary responsibility of making sure that you were getting the right person for perhaps the right amount of money. I don't think that occurred. So we reached out, I think, to one, and then that person became the project manager, and then went on the payroll. Those things occurred, and then we started looking for procurement of services and so forth. That should have been done by our director. And I'm looking, now, we're talking January, February, March, April, the school committee accepted it. I'm looking at, I guess, this contract, it's May 25th. January, February, March, April, the end of May, five months later, we're getting a contract. So the oversight of, hey, we need to move this project forward. We need a contract. We need something from you. We're running out of time. We have to spend certain amount of money by June 30th, and then we, I guess, we get another bite at the apple after that. I'm looking for, was that the project manager? Who was supposed to be moving this along to make sure that we were following a sequential step?
Yeah, so the project manager was supposed to be moving it along. I gave a legal opinion, several legal opinions, but one of them was that the procurement officer had to do the procurements. It's in the statute, that person's responsible for doing the procurements. And I believe at that point in time, your procurement officer did get involved after I gave my legal opinion. But the project manager, so to speak, because I don't think the person necessarily had particular certifications as a project manager, and because of the scope of the project, it actually isn't required. It would have to be required if it was over $150,000, even more than that. Because I ran to it in another location, it's $300,000, I believe. So if the project is under $300,000, you don't have to have a project manager. However, most places have someone to coordinate, even if it's less. Typically, if I was involved with something like this, the first thing I would look at is prefabricated-type buildings. Then they just come in, they plop it down, you don't have to pay for the design and engineering process. You go out, you get three quotes, and see what their designs look like, figure out what meets the best interests of the school, and choose it. We did that in an area school system. And, but when I saw this particular document, it wasn't within, anything close to the scope that had been described to me, and the cost wasn't anywhere within the cost that was described to me. So based on that, and based on the fact where this far in the summer, and I'm not sure you could get anyone else to do it for $45,000, and maybe you could have if you got a prefabricated building, I don't know. But where we are right now, I just gave my opinion that, based on the information I had, that you couldn't afford to sign this contract with integrity, that the figure was not going to end up to be $45,000. It could be as high as $90,000. Because this is the type of contract that anything happens, it's, you get dinged for an additional amount, and the additional amount is usually more than you expected. And then they have the 25% surcharge.
Robin, and then David.
So I got a lot of notes here, so I hope I can be organized. I just wanted to ask, is it Mr. Dupre?
Yes.
Oh, hi, I'm Robin. So I was co-chair of the building committee years ago when we built the high school. I know my experience is limited, but I have never heard about going out to bid without a clear plan. Like, I look at this contract, and I don't know if anybody else would agree with you, but I think this contract is kind of a joke, because I don't think this person, these people realistically, nobody would sign this contract. 25% of change order. I mean, we did this whole school, we had tons of change orders.
Right, exactly.
We never gave 25% on top. I think that this was something-
Actual, actual cost, not 25%.
Right. And I think this contract was submitted so that, honestly, I think that the project manager could save face. I questioned the date on it, May 25th. I don't know if that's actually when the bid was received.
Was the 7th, 8th is when we got the-
This is, this is just the estimate, Robin. I included the initial estimate, and then I took the contract after that, and then the second contract, which none of us knew were coming, was, yeah, the first contract was sent on July 7th. Second contract for the 6,100 was sent on July 8th.
So July 7th was when we got the contract.
Right, so that's kind of true. So that, to me, you know, I feel bad, because at that first meeting, when we met this person, who, as it turned out, is not a certified contractor, and I really feel, besides the concerns about not getting the building, I have other questions about him, but it just seemed so crazy to me that we would actually not have an actual schematic drawing, an architect's drawing, or whatever. And then it just kept going on and on. And then even in this contract, it says, design time, coordination, Santa Cam, whatever, that's 85,500. And then there's another 6,100 on top of that. I don't know, the contract, to me, is kind of a joke. I feel like it was just submitted to save face, and clearly, no one would sign that contract. So, and also, I wanted to clarify, that we actually found out that we got this grant in August, is my understanding, so it wasn't January. So there was plenty of time for, to take some of that grant money and actually have a schematic drawing done, so that when you went out to bid, you were clearly giving them exactly what you were going to be building. So screwed up crazy there. Okay, so the other questions that I have, and my, a big concern is, you know, the project manager was hired. We didn't even really know about the project when he was hired. I mean, I was on Building and Gons. We talked around, we didn't even know about it. We didn't even know about the grant until that first, I mean, I didn't, and maybe somebody else did, but I didn't, maybe I missed that. And now, we've paid him from January, is that correct?
Yeah, we tried to get Building and Grounds meeting, honestly, in January or February. I don't know if the committee was informed, there was no, we did try to coordinate one or two meetings with Building and Grounds, and it didn't happen, which created a delay.
It could have come up at a regular school committee.
But the project manager was hired, correct, and paid up until June 30th.
So he, how much money did we actually pay him for this project?
$20,000.
We paid him $20,000, and that money's gone from the grant. It's gone.
$20,000 is gone from the grant.
I thought, I thought it was going to be $15,000 to June 30th.
Yeah, it's just a, yeah, it's a little bit less than $20,000. It's a little bit less, because we still have one more payment, so it's about, yeah, just under $20,000.
Okay, for one thing, we shouldn't be making that payment, but I guess, whatever happens. But, so that money is lost money to the district, is that not true? And is that money coming from the grant, or because-
Coming from the grant.
I would seriously doubt it. How can you, how can you-
I just want to remind everyone to raise their hands.
I have, could I speak now?
Wait, no.
Robin was still going.
As charming as you are.
I'm going to be long, too, so I'm going to use-
So, so that, so, you know, clearly wasting $20,000 on it, and I really, I think we should go after him for the money back, or somebody should replace that money, because he did not follow through. I mean, I don't know how many meetings we had that he was like, oh, Monday, oh, I'm going to have it next Monday, oh, I'm going to have it this. And, you know, in the meantime, you know, this whole thing about the fire department, and then Mike says, oh, I'll just go talk to the fire department. And he finds him like, I mean, if you want to call the fire department, call the fire department, it's not that difficult. So this is a really, an embarrassment for the committee, but it's more, I don't even know what to say. Like, was he reporting to you? Was he telling you that he wasn't getting things done?
He was reporting at the meetings, Building and Grounds. I would follow up and ask, you know, when is the contract coming? You told him it was going to come Monday, when is the contract coming? And I was getting the same answers that you were. It was coming. I, you know, when I received the first, I guess, we had the vote, correct, at the June meeting about the contract, and then Mike had brought up DESI needs to approve it, so I had contacted Rick Kingsley, our overseer, who contacted Jay Siller from DESI and said, you know, yeah, technically, you should probably send it over, we'll greenlight it, we know about it, it's DESI money, you know, just get us the contract. And then from that point on, it was, you know, I went on vacation, but I still contacted them from vacation, do we have the contract, when's the contract coming? Because Rick Kingsley, the overseer, kept asking me about the contract as well, so it was a big delay in getting us the contract, which didn't come until July 7th. I forwarded to Julie in an email, said, please, make sure the attorneys review this. And then, and then we, and then we received another contract, which I did not know was coming for the 6,100 for the engineering design on July 8th. And I, it's the same to you, the 46, 17 in this estimate. I had Tanya call procurement officer, the company, that, you know, that day, and say, I thought this design time, doesn't, isn't that the engineering design? Because that's what we were led to believe, that this wasn't going to be an additional cost. And they said, no, we need, you know, to have this engineering design to 6,100 before we can pull permits and all these. So that was a surprise to all of us.
Yeah, and the electrical and ADA was in it from the very beginning.
And that was not in this contract, right.
And he was there for that conversation. I mean, Jason was there for those conversations, that we said we needed the electrical, we needed the ADA. So I, I don't know. I, I guess, I feel, I just can't imagine that he took $20,000 from us. I don't know what he did with the money from January until when he didn't get contracts to us, but I think he swindled us. That's what I feel like.
Did you want to respond to something directly?
Yeah, I just wanted to address one point that she raised, which is getting the money back. We can't. That person is an employee on the payroll, federal and state taxes, and it would violate the wage and hour law to try to recruit. You could fire the person, but you can't get the money back.
Well, I make a motion if he gets fired.
Well, they end at June 30th.
It ends.
So he's not, no longer employed, so he can't be fired.
It's terrible. And we don't have a building.
We don't have a building. On a positive note, I just learned that Ariel did get the grant amended. She was able to work during her vacation to put that money to use, you know, the rest of the money, instead of going toward the building to other areas. So I will, I can email that to everybody. Julie, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
So I'll email that to everybody, so the money is, the other, the rest of the money will go to good use, and-
Okay, I'm done. Okay, so David, and then Alan.
I'm astounded that they would allow us to-
I'm astounded that they would allow us to fumble around like this on the project, and let us expend the grant money on that. So I think we're at risk of having to cover that money. But, Desi, is that the source of funds?
Yeah, Ariel said she checked, 'cause that was my question too, to her, with, with her contact at Desi. We are not responsible to pay that money back.
So I, I think that we should continue on with the project. I think the project's important, and I'm doing a project similar in Warwick. That's why I know about the comm buys and central register stuff. In our case, we're gonna assemble the frame with volunteer labor, so we're procuring a pre-cut kit. And even though there was no labor involved, because it's construction, there are procurement rules. And the procurement has to be under fifty thousand dollars. So there's no way that, even if we had done the central register, that we could sign this contract knowing it could go over fifty thousand dollars. So, that's our defense, but, I can skip personally the recriminations and try and move forward. I'd like to see us build a pavilion, find some more money. Part of my battle on Warwick's Pavilion with procurement experts was, my answer was, "This is gonna cost ninety-five thousand dollars if we do it the good old government way." And, um, but I'm, I'm buying a pre-cut CNC cut timber frame kit, and deliver it to the site. And we opened those quotes this week, and they ranged from twenty-nine thousand to well over fifty, several of them. And a good half of them couldn't sign the anti collusion paperwork that's required under, and, and so they, we had to toss their, um-
What was that, antitrust?
Pardon me?
I don't, what was the paperwork they couldn't sign?
Uh, they're, well, they didn't. They just sent it, they just treated it like a normal quote for business, and didn't, didn't sign the form that the Attorney General requires them to sign this. So they didn't collude with me or anybody else. So, you don't get that, bingo, gone. I, I know from past experience that, on a non-residential site, you've gotta have engineered stamped plans. And that's, so, you know, whether it's two hundred dollars an hour, or whatever, you've gotta have something for that. There's nothing we can build for our towns or our schools that we can do it like we might build a garage in the backyard at our house. So the engineering is, um, this quote, to me, looks like pricing for least regret. That's when, um, "Okay, I'll give you a price, and if, if you award me this, I'll never be sorry, I, I, I signed the contract." But I do think we could do this. I think it's important, and I'd, I'd like us to keep the project, try to find a way to keep the project going, and learn from past mistakes.
So we, we could look at that, but it wouldn't be from this grant, because the grant Ariel amended, and it, it's, like, just beat the deadline to amend the grant to use those funds in other areas.
Yeah, I wish we could've discussed that at the last meeting. So, so how, how are we spending the money now, besides paying the wages of the project manager?
I'll make sure I send this out to everybody, but there's-
All right, I won't hold everybody up.
Yeah, that's okay, there's some, I can send this document out.
I think this project is worth doing.
But there's, uh, some good areas that are, you know, there's curriculum certifications for CTE programs, in business entrepreneurship, energy, natural resources, health science courses, curriculum certifications for foods and consumer and family science, three D printer and poster printer engineering design shop, biomedical supplies, um- Other areas that we, she was able to amend the grant in a very, just a few days, really, a very short timeframe, to utilize the remaining money to go to good use in other areas.
So Warwick got, uh, twenty thousand dollars from the Mass Cultural Council. They normally would fund your addition to your library, or something like that. So that would be someplace you could go. I thought it was a crazy ask, and it was awarded. We have to be very careful when we talk about that portion of funding, that the purpose of the pavilion is community performance space. It's not for the school, but it's on the school grounds, so it'll be off limits when school's in session, that's for sure.
Go ahead.
So, I'm, I'm assuming that, um, those can't be surplanning funds, that, that there couldn't be expenses that would be paid out of the budget to, uh, for this project? And, and then, uh, the, the grant money could cover some of the costs that oppressively in the budget, or no?
I don't think so, the grant is done now, it's like written and approved, and deadline's-
No, you're saying, you're saying getting funds from someplace else within your budget? Within the budget, but, but getting the things in the budget from the grant.
Well, you know, those are the type of issues you would have to review with your overseers from the state.
Okay.
Um, 'cause they, they may not approve that type of transfer.
So I had a couple of questions, and one was sparked by Robin's questioning, and then another by your response. So, along the way, we had someone, an employee, that wasn't doing the job. At some point, John, you either did or didn't make a decision on whether or not you should be terminating employment. Um, I don't know if that was in your thought process, in terms of, "Hey, he's not doing his job, I keep asking and asking." And that's, that's your responsibility to say, "Enough is enough." Were there, were there employment, um, issues that precluded Jonathan, since he was on the payroll, and you talked about various protections and so forth, that Jonathan would've been advised that, "No, you should not, you cannot, you know, terminate the project manager for cause, like, not doing his job."
Wouldn't even need cause, you could terminate at any time. He was not willing.
Yeah, so he wasn't at will. So, I guess, the question then is, Jonathan, why didn't you, you know, at which point, enough is enough? I haven't gotten the answers.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, we had the meetings, the project was, although very slow and frustrating, I think, for all of us, the whole process, it was moving along, and we got down to this point, and I'm not saying this was easy or well-done, but we would have nobody else overseeing the project. There was, really, we posted for the, I didn't see any other applicants come through, even though we didn't technically need to post. I think he did have, um, general contractors license at one point, he worked for construction. Project was moving along, but it came down to, I think, of, I don't know if, I'm not saying it was him or the company, I don't really know, but it was his job to, you know, kind of mediate and be our, you know, our go-to to this company, is everything kept getting delayed. And so, Building and Grounds was asking, you know, I was asking, and then, you know, we'd get something, but it took, took a while. And so, the process was moving forward, it was just very slow and delayed. I'm not saying that was on him or this company, it was some kind of combination of both. But, you know, in the end, we did get a con, you know, if we got this first contract, and it looked good, and it was for around the forty-five thousand, which we had budgeted, we could probably move forward. The problem is, we got a second contract the day after, which I didn't know was coming, which was July eighth for sixty-one hundred, which put us over the edge. And at the same time, Julia contacted Fred, who was reviewing the first contract, and then we had a conversation, and Fred said, "Look, there's a lot of issues with this contract, this is gonna cost eighty, ninety thousand." We had all talked and said, "We can't move forward with this." So, I didn't know really any more than you did, as far as, I was surprised by the second contract. I didn't know about these legal issues with the contract. You know, I may, could see like the twenty-five percent in obvious things that were in the contract, that you're like, "That seems excessive to me." But again, that was July seventh, July eighth, so at that point, he was, he'd be willing to stay on, but he was technically done June thirtieth. And, you know, we were all hoping this would move forward and be done. I guess we were all optimistic that, you know, this was gonna happen, and in the end, it just, with these contracts, it wasn't feasible or advisable.
Well, I, I agree with Robin, that no, no one would sign this contract. And the fact that it came in so late, there's not even enough time to, to do what you had to do, so it just seemed like-
That's the other thing, we were pushed up against the timeline, you know, the process just dragged out, and to get this done, it would have to be done by August, by the end of August, how was, with the extension, you know, it would've been.
You would need an open checkbook to, like-
We were only pushed up against the timeline because of the, you know, if he had started in January, that would've been a different story. But he, I mean, clearly, he was not, he was not qualified for the job. And I, I feel like, I do think the project is, is important, you know. I don't, I don't know how you can do it, we can't go back to towns and ask for money, you can't do it from capital expense or anything. But, you know, maybe we can look at it for next year, maybe God, maybe that poor woman will write us another grant. Ariel will write us another grant, um, now that we have the other part done. But, the extra part that's really sad for me, is that, you know, we didn't put in that thirty-five thousand dollars for the world language. Thirty-five lousy thousand dollars, and we gave twenty thousand dollars to this guy.
Yeah, yeah.
And to me, we were gonna, all right, we're gonna build this pavilion, it's gonna be something interesting and fun, it's gonna maybe bring, um, some more kids to Pioneer, for whatever, for the outdoor. And now, I, I just think that man should be ashamed of himself. And I, and I actually, um, you know, I think oversight was poor, Jonathan, I have to be honest. You know, I wouldn't, I would've fired him long ago. But, um, even with that, shame on him. Because, the other thing was, and I could be wrong about this, but I thought he kept telling us, "Oh, well, these are my friends, Integrity, they're gonna, that..." Am I wrong about that? He was like, this was the company that he wanted to go with, and I feel like it all got fudged to give the contract to them. I mean, I could be wrong about this, this is probably inflammatory. And, and then obviously, these people didn't want to do it.
I just want to make sure we go in order, um-
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
He clarified it when he was doing, I was the timeline, but he clarified it.
Okay, okay, so Stephanie, you're all set.
Yep.
And then it was Michelle, um, and then Robin, you can finish.
Uh, I'm probably done, I should shut up.
So-
Oh, okay, okay.
So a project manager, to me, is from beginning to end. And I don't understand why he was an employee and not a vendor contractor. It doesn't make sense that you didn't post a position and equal opportunity for anyone in the district to become an employee to do this. And if you knew that the grant, he was only gonna be employed until June thirtieth, and the pavilion was not gonna start, I think conversation should've happened well in advance. And the oversight of this was very poor. And it really does not sit well, again, for Pioneer. I mean, what is it gonna take for us to have good oversight of projects, of hiring practices? And I am on the school committee to make sure that we do things appropriately. And I want to see this pavilion built, but I would've never paid someone twenty thousand dollars for this. And I think he should be ashamed of himself, and I hope he gets, he hears this, because this was not right. And let this be a lesson, we do not hire friends. We are equal opportunity. We put, uh, posting, uh, whatever, whether we're going for contractors or employees, and we do this right according to the laws of Massachusetts.
You didn't have anything more to add, Robin?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, uh, Mike.
So, I guess, I'll go back to after August of last year. Anytime after that grant was awarded, we could've had discussions as a full school committee before somebody was hired as a job overseer. We had new members coming on. I was, as the chair of that committee, I was never told to have a meeting because of a time deadline. I was never told that we were hiring, the committee was never told that we were hiring a person. We were told at the January meeting, if you read the superintendent's report, 'cause the superintendent's report did not get read at that meeting. I went back and watched all the meetings to see where the breakdown was. There was no communication regarding this grant, other than in August of last year, that we were told that we had received the grant to do the project. So, the committee, we did our job. But we were, we started late in the game, we had a meeting scheduled, that got canceled because of another conflict. But, we, as a committee, asked the right questions. So, the, the committee members should actually feel pretty good that we did our job. We asked if they had enough money, not once, but three times. First for the thirty-five thousand that was originally proposed, and then it got moved up to forty thousand. And then we said, "Hey, do you got enough money?" And then the bid came in, this estimate, which was May twenty-fifth, said forty-five thousand. Then we had to come back to the school committee and move that to forty-five thousand dollars. So, we did what we were, and we asked, "Is this gonna be enough money?" Based on what was presented to us from that job overseer. We were told ADA walkway, we were told there was gonna be electrical conduit put in, so we could put power in that building. Uh, we were told there was gonna be twenty-five hundred dollars of ceiling material probably donated. This is all coming from the ju, the project overseer. We, and we brought it to the full committee to get the approval. We were even asked, which is disappointing, is, they asked us to give the go-ahead to start the project as a subcommittee. I said, "We recommend to the full committee, the full committee makes the decision." So, these are the things that happened, and the, the contract come, the contract is, as we know, is a bogus contract. Nobody would sign that in their right mind. I liked David's thought, you know, of continuing with the project. I mean, I was even accused of not wanting to do the project, after offering to help put up the ceiling. I mean, this is how crazy it was. So, but if you don't do things right, and make sure that we're doing things proper, you get yourself in trouble. So, we did what needed to be done to make sure things were correct, and they weren't correct, and that's why the project isn't happening. You know, I still would like to see it happen, but I just don't see, the funds can't come out of our budget this year. The overseer, the state, is not gonna let that happen. But that doesn't mean we can't put in for some other kind of a grant, to hopefully have it happen next year. And I think that the Building and Grounds Subcommittee could definitely run this project with ease. And the project overs, oversight was hired without really our knowledge. We were told about it after the fact, but it was without our knowledge.
David.
I think we ought to find a little bit of money and, and take a next step on the project. In part, to overcome the black eye we've got from getting to where we are here. Because we're gonna have to answer the question, "How the heck you think you're gonna pull it off? You already got a grant, if anybody's looking at it." But, the engineering and the design for the foundation, we could get that going, and it's, it's much easier to raise money when you've got something in place, done, to work off of. I also don't indict the, um, using our own workforce model. I mean, we've got the challenge as a public entity of, of prevailing wage. And one of the ways that I found to help bring Warwick's project, which is no, which is no accomplished feat, but I proved that a, a frame cut off-site is not subject to prevailing wage. You know, when you, when you're buying, as Fred said, you know, you buy a pre-cut kit. So, it's still construction, it still has its own procurement stuff. But, a-again, you know, you hire a consultant, they're supposed to know what they're doing. We didn't, we hired an employee, we have a, we had a supervision problem, and we had competence or motivation, or, I mean, it's a tough time right now, too. So I, I don't think it was necessarily a bad way to go. I've, I've done it on some major Warwick construction, hundreds of thousands of dollars of roofs and sprinkler system repair and such. So it's, it's not a bad idea, but I try to think, Warwick's two million dollars, again, which is a seventh of, you know, or an eighth of this district, could I take my eye off the ball and lose us, you know, a, a seventh of twenty thousand dollars? Easily. So, let's learn from this, let's move on. I'd like, I'd like to not quit on the project, and we're not gonna be able to do it the old-fashioned way. There's plenty of barns that were raised, and a pavilion's kind of like a barn without a, without any walls, but we're a public space, and we gotta get certain things done. But, uh, uh, in the same way, if we were going after roadwork, you know, the first thing we want to do to go after a road grant is say, "We got the engineering done, we've got plans, we're ready, what we need now is money."
Um, I just wanted to add a couple of things. I feel very- I feel very upset that the project is not moving forward. As the school committee chair, I'm privy to the communications regarding the subcommittee emails as well, any communication. And I questioned back in May, you know, if the project manager has been on the books since January, why are we not receiving, why have we not received viable estimates by now? What has he been doing since January? I have no construction background myself. So, I, we were paying someone a lot of money to be the expert in this project. And therefore, and we didn't receive this contract until July. So, but at our meeting, you know, the statement was made that the school committee did not, was almost putting roadblocks as to not wanting this project to move forward. Which I was trying to state at that, meaning that that couldn't be further from the truth, that we were, we had not received what we needed to receive in order to give the blessing on a project. So, and even on July 7th, when this was received, again, I have no construction background, and I'm not one to procure bids. But why wouldn't the project manager have seen all the problems with this contract? You know, all along, he had stated that he could get volunteers or people would donate their time to build the pad and things like that. Number five on this contract is that no one else is allowed to do anything on the project, but the builder, you know, so he, and I, I had said to John then, like, John, why, why would, he's supposed to be protecting us in this project. And why would he just hand us this for us to have to decipher and find the mistakes or... So, this man does not deserve a dime of that $20,000, in my opinion. I just, and I'm sick over it myself. I had hoped that potentially we would have some recourse. But it, it's really incredibly upsetting. So, the, I certainly want to move forward in the spirit of putting this, the $45,000 to great use. But I also think it's important to discuss what happened so that it will not happen again. Because we have a committee here of incredibly intelligent people with hearts, and we volunteer our time here to make sure that these children are getting what they deserve. And for this to go so horrendously wrong, I do think it's important that we just have a clear understanding of what happened so that we don't make the same mistakes.
Yeah, so David had mentioned having, I don't know where you get the funds, but engineering and design of the particular site and what you actually want. I don't know what the building would look like, I don't know if it could be a prefabricated building or not. But I think I would start with those approaches. First of all, figure out where you're going to get the money, do engineering and design. And if you have someone oversee it, I would go out to bid and then hire an employee. It's legal to do it, depending on the cost of the project. But as we just found out, it's not desirable.
Mike and then Robin.
So, I guess on a good note, I did talk to John, we actually talked about the modulators. And maybe taking those down, and maybe doing outdoor classroom spaces on those foundations. So, there may be something to look at that we need to get rid of because we can't sell them. Take them, you know, maybe work that into this project. And we've got three foundations already there. Maybe look at creating the outdoor, three separate outdoor classrooms maybe on those foundations, and then get rid of the mold-infested buildings that we can't utilize at this time. So, that, I just wanted to bring that up, that John and I did talk about that. So, maybe we can work that into this project.
Robin.
I was just wondering if there was any money left in rural aid if we were, I mean, that sounds like a really good thing to look into that you guys had come up with. But I was wondering if, since we gave that $12,000, I was wondering if there's any money in rural aid to do that pro, the design project piece of it, if we decide to do that.
Yeah, I can, I'll double check on that, if we do have money and how much would be available.
Right.
I think the rural aid, John, had to be spent by 2/30.
Yeah, that was spent, but there could be other grants coming up also that we can maybe work some of this into. So, we'll explore those options.
Because we'd have to hire some, somebody to look at the feasibility of doing what you just said also.
Right.
I don't know if that would be close enough to the school also for ADA.
Yeah, that has, that has ramps going into those buildings now.
Right.
So, you know.
It's probably already ADA compliant.
Yeah, it would just be.
You would have to check.
Yeah.
Taking them down and putting them in the dumpsters, which, you know, I'd see companies, they could do it.
Let's just cut the sides off. Let some air in there.
Yeah, air it out for me.
In most places, when the modulators were first done, they were all ADA compliant. So, I don't know about yours, but in most places, they were.
I was thinking in terms of getting out there, but even children that didn't have a disability or a wheelchair would have to walk out there. So, if you're in a wheelchair, you could still go out there as long as you can get in there. So, that's probably not an issue.
So, what happens now, goes back to the subcommittee, or?
Well, do we have to vote to cancel the project, I would assume?
Well, not, I guess to reject the contract.
Or reject the contract.
Reject, right.
You can take a vote to reject the contract, so.
I'll move to reject the contract.
I second that.
Fred, should the motion have a reason?
It doesn't have to have a reason.
What you calling, I'll do it no regret contract?
Pricing without regret.
I think my son does that, actually.
At least you don't have to, David, it was the lowest bid. So, we don't have to explain why we didn't choose the lowest bid. If you can call it a bid at all, so.
We had eight people second.
Right. Are there any objections?
Oh, look, we all agree on something.
You had a second, did you have a vote?
I know, so, now, do I have to go through everyone in a live meeting format? Or can I just say, everyone in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so someone has to notify the company that it was rejected.
Since they, since they had me as owner, no.
I'll notify them.
Thank you. Now, is there any further discussion? Oh, Reina.
You know, I just wanted to just clarify that I think moving forward, it'd be important to have, to know, I think there were a lot of steps that were missed along the way. And for whatever reasons, it's good to clarify, you know, when there is grant money, knowing that, you know, the school committee will need to vote to accept the grant. And then I think we also need to clarify some of the process, like, you know, once the grant is accepted, you know, do we need to vote as a committee and a subcommittee to accept bids? And if money is shifted around within the grant, you know, does that need the approval of the school committee? I mean, I think those are pieces that I, that, being new to this process, I didn't know myself, so.
Alan and then Robin.
So, going forward, I won't ask if we did comprehensive reference checks on the project manager. But I will comment that going forward, that that will be essential to make sure that we do our due diligence and we do our reference checks to make sure we have a responsible and credible person in charge of this going forward.
And Robin.
I just wanted to thank you and Mike for your leadership and your extra time that I know that you guys put in. And that, you know, this feels good to me, this feels like a committee, and I really, I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, so, next on the agenda, we have the update from the Business Administrator Search Committee. So, Alan.
So, I'll try to move along fairly quickly, and I'm going to pause in between for a discussion and then for a vote, so we don't end up with all this stuff at the end and then, what are we voting on and whatnot? So, I'm going to do this in pieces. So, we met just before this meeting and tried to do a number of things that we could accomplish. When I initially put together a process for the search committee, my thought process was that we would have a comprehensive composition of a search committee, that we would be going over the criteria and what the goals were and what we expected of the successful candidate in the next year or two. We would then put together questions around what we were looking for. We would then screen those candidates and then select several to move forward to the committee because they met the criteria, we were comfortable with them, and we felt any one of those, you know, we could live with and make a recommendation. So, that was in the perfect world, which didn't occur. What did occur was that we had a limited number of resumes, four. And we looked at the criteria that was posted. Two of the candidates met the criteria enough to warrant going forward and recommending them to the committee. And we then talked about a pathway in time, because you know that, you know, that's kind of an important factor. So, one pathway was we'd schedule another meeting and then go through the, go through the criteria as a search committee and then come back, and then that would delay it and then move it forward. So, after discussion, I pointed out that we had two candidates that met, pretty much met the criteria, two that did not. And so, the consensus of the search committee was to move those two candidates forward so that the school committee can begin that interviewing process. So, that's a little bit of background. So, I would like the committee to entertain the following for the first component, which is the composition of the search committee. The, the, what do I want to call this? The, the compressed search committee would consist of four school committees, the superintendent, two central office, and the union representative. And I'll explain that in a minute. So, that would be who was involved if we, if we have such a limited number and we're moving that forward. If we, well, when we post and we put some other criteria that may attract additional candidates, then, and it looks like the search committee would actually go through a process and bring in the candidates and interview them and then make a recommendation, then I'd like to see that then expanded to select board representative, a finance representative, and a parent. So, that, in total, that would be the composition of the committee if we're continuing to bring candidates forward. So, one of the reasons we'd be bringing candidates forward is because we didn't, we didn't put in the posting the salary range. And so, if we put the salary range in and it's competitive, we, I'm optimistic, we may get people that come forward that are now more interested in applying for the position. And we may find people that are, that are going forward, that look at our salary range and decide to withdraw. So, that's really critical to repost this with the salary range, which the search committee is recommending that the school committee tonight also approve a range from $105,000 to $125,000. That would give the school committee some flexibility as they look at candidates and they look at credentials and what they may bring to the table. And it gives them a pretty good range in terms of what they might negotiate with a successful candidate. So, I have more, but I'll pause there and ask if the committee is willing to entertain the composition of the committee, of the search committee, as the school committee, the superintendent, the central office staff, and the union representative. And I'll call it phase one. And if we have additional candidates that we'll be screening, we'll include the select board representatives, the finance committee, and the parents. So, I'll do that in a form of a motion. That's a motion.
I'll move to have that be accepted.
I'll second.
Second. Or you have a, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, so now we can have a discussion, go ahead Karen.
Question, can somebody remind me what we have in the budget currently for this salary?
It's 98.
Where do we get the extra money?
The, depending on when this person gets hired, I believe, I don't know if you talked to Tanya about the money, because if, the way the contract would be, if she's not collecting off of that.
Might be prorated.
Right, so depending on the start.
And the start date might be prorated, because typically, a position starts July 1st. So, if we don't have somebody start, they'll stay till September 1st.
Okay, and who does the work of this individual in the meantime?
Alan, do you want to comment on what we talked about?
That moves to a whole nother topic, but I guess we could address that now.
Well, we still, we have the motion and the second.
Yeah.
On this topic.
On this topic.
Just a quick question, because I didn't quite understand. Are you, are you suggesting that we would repost, you have two people that you would put forward now? Or are we going to repost it and then put those two people forward, plus whoever else applies?
Okay, so.
I misunderstood that.
No, that's, that's, I probably didn't explain that really well in the detail I should have gone into. So, when we repost it and we have the salary range in there, several things would be happening with the two candidates we'd be recommending to go forward. One of them is we would tell them what the salary was to be established, and they will say, oh, I'm still interested, or I'm not interested. So, that's one piece. The second piece is we would be doing a core check before the school committee were to interview the candidates. And the third thing is Joanne would be contacting them to say, you're being considered to be moved forward to meet with the school committee, are you still interested in the position? Because once they know the salary and it's going to be out there, they may decide they don't, you know, they don't want their employee, employer to know that they had an interest, so. So, those things would be happening like tomorrow.
I just also think that if you've already applied for the job and then you see it reposted, and they say they're moving you forward, but they reposted it, I don't know, does that...
No, that's a great concern, we talked a little bit about that, in that we'll explain to the candidates that we, you know, we want to move this forward process, we're going to begin the interviewing process, but we didn't have the salary in there, so the reason we're putting it out there now is to make sure that we have it in there.
Okay.
And if it seems appropriate, we'll be interviewing additional candidates. And I think that would make sense. I defer to you, Fred.
I was just thinking about one thing you said about the core. I don't believe you can do the core until there is a offer of power.
Yeah, you're right.
There's one exception, police officers. There's a special statute that allows you to do a criminal check of police officers before you offer them a job.
Thank you.
But only police.
Absolutely right.
Karen had a question.
Sure, I think I may know at least part of the answer to this already. But could you tell us why you did not put the salary range in the original posting?
I did not do the original posting. I came in at the last meeting and saw that the posting was out there, that the, that had been reviewed by the overseer, and I think our attorney had looked at it and commented that it would have to have a salary in it, but we certainly could post it without it. So, I think it was posted without it because it needed to get out there and we could start looking at candidates. So, I'm doing due diligence now and going back and... So I'm doing due diligence now and going back and following what the attorney had said to whoever.
It was, so it was a conversation with me, I think John, you were in it as well, and Russell. So in the interest of time, we had thought that we would use the previous posting that had been used for, I guess, Tanya's position. Russell did say, the only thing I would recommend or I, I see that's omitted is the salary range, but that can be added or discussed at some point. So, you know, that's a, that's a learning experience and certainly I, I, you know.
And I just, his recommendation was to increase the salary range to try to attract more candidates.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll get to part two and three.
David.
Well, I just think if we have a viable candidate or two, we should get to vetting them very quickly.
Agree.
And then this discussion about how we, the strategy of how we advertise.
Right.
So you want to do a vote on the composition and then we'll go to the next thing?
Sure. So. Yeah. Are all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Any objections? So that passes?
Okay, so then part two was the salary range. When we looked around in the area, Urban was a hundred six, Mahaw was one twenty-three, Franklin Tech was one thirty-two, Mohawk was one twenty, Frontier one nineteen, Greenfield one twenty-eight, Gil Montague one twenty-six. So we were thinking of this as the ceiling. You start with your highest pay, which is the superintendents, which are about the same in both districts, around one forty, and then backed it down from there and then looked at where people are and then said, well, what's an amount that gives the most flexibility with the school committee when they're going forward and negotiating? That leaned in between a hundred five and a hundred twenty-five thousand.
Did the, did the job itself get easier? I don't know, not that I can do this job. Did it get easier because we don't have two schools now? I mean, should that be taken into consideration at all or not? I was just wondering.
No, it's not.
Okay.
I think it gets easier because we're not a train wreck. When, when you're, you know, when you don't have sufficient cash flow, when, when everything is on fire, it's, it's a lot of extra work. And, and I think that we do have, you know, some mature systems and such in place now. But I think it's, I think it's important that we, that we don't go without a captain at this running length of time.
Stephanie.
The other thing that I just want to point out is when, last meeting, Tanya said she was willing to work on contract, but that would be an added pay for her. So if we're looking at budgeted ninety-eight thousand, we also have to remember if we're gonna be paying her to be orienting the new person, that's gonna be extra dollars added into the cost there.
So I would make a motion to approve the salary range for the committee to post, advertise between a hundred five thousand and a hundred twenty-five thousand.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, what was the dollar amount?
A hundred five thousand to a hundred twenty-five thousand.
Okay, I'd like to remind the member to use his microphone.
Yes.
Thank you. A hundred five thousand to a hundred twenty-five thousand. Now people go, whoa, what's that for? So that'd be the salary range to be established for the next advertisement of the business administrator.
I'm confused. We have two applicants. We're gonna do a next advertisement anyway?
I can go back and re-explain.
No, nobody wants to suffer that.
It's a republishment.
My bad, I'll watch the video.
It's almost like a republishment of the job description, just including the salary range.
Well, can, can we first reach out to, to appropriate app? Okay.
Yep, we are, we plan on.
Don't want to alarm them.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that motion passes.
So the, so doing things concurrently, the, the next thing we talked about was not only, you know, would we re-advertise this and see what candidates might come forward with this established, that in order, so we're not having all our eggs in one basket, I think everyone's in agreement, we're going forward, looking and hoping that we find someone that will be an employee of the district. We, we think it might be prudent, it would be prudent to also explore, so we're turning over two other stones, explore a, what a service may have to offer if we're, if we're in a limbo state or we find that there's not a candidate. So we're looking at a few backup opportunities that we're doing concurrently. And the, and the second one is to reach out to Gil Montague to see if there was any interest in either helping out or maybe the committee finds someone that is really good but needs mentoring and maybe there's an opportunity for that. So we were reaching out to a, to Gil Montague in a, just a soft conversation to see what that might look like if, if things don't work out the way we're hoping, as well as a management service to see what they might have to offer. So that's, I guess, at this point informational. I'm not sure if that requires a vote. It doesn't, does it?
You're just providing information.
Yeah. So in the process, this is, this is going to require some immediate work on your part. So first, the subcommittee is gonna be meeting next Wednesday. And I just reviewed with the attorney that if I put together questions and get them out to the subcommittee members, that they can in fact give me a response to the questions, but more importantly, information regarding a rubrics of what they would be expecting to hear in a, a, a first-class response to a question. And so they won't be communicating amongst themselves but sending me that information. And then I would put together a rubrics. And it's, it's pretty easy, it makes it much more objective, but it's pretty easy in that once you establish this is really a tremendous response and would be rated at the highest rating, whatever that category is, let's say it's outstanding, then from there you go down to a four, or a three, or a two, and a one, or whatever it's going to be, and you say, you know, if you hear eight out of the twelve mentioned or a substitute for those, that would be considered a three. And if you hear less than half and so forth. So it creates common thinking. I would get that together, put it, put it together. Next Wednesday, we would be meeting, we said at five o'clock, to go over the rubrics and go over the, the evaluation, well, the, the rubrics and evaluating the responses. The school committee would continue to have your meeting on the, the next day, July twenty-ninth. And if, if all things are going the way we hope and we have candidates that are for you to interview, you would then be meeting at six o'clock. You could go over the, the questions, the rubrics, and have a conversation and change them if you wish or add. And so you would be involved in that, but to make sure that you're on the same page when you're listening to the responses. And then at your meeting, you could organize who's gonna be asking the questions and, and so forth. And then you would actually start, you'd have an interview for forty-five minutes and then a little bit of a break so you could debrief and then follow up with another forty-five and then another debrief. And then you could deliberate or you could, well, you could do whatever you want at that point. Have another meeting or do some reference checks and things like that.
Would that be on top of the regular school committee meeting?
Well, my understanding is that it may or may not be happening because the business director isn't sure yet whether or not she'll have those.
So next Thursday wasn't a regular school committee meeting. It was a special one for Tanya to go over the, the.
Final.
The final financials. She, she is encountering just a time crunch and wasn't sure if she was going to be able to have that for the, the full committee next Thursday. So if she does, we would certainly review everything with her. But if not, we could do this process. So leave the commit, leave the meeting as scheduled.
So I guess the, the question for the committee is, do you feel, because we'll be working on Wednesday and then getting you that information on Thursday, I guess we could have it, you know, emailed out, so, you know, the questions and we could do the, should we do the rubrics as well or should we hand that out at the table? I'm concerned.
I'd hand out the meeting. So I think you're looking at two parts. One, what the subcommittee is going to put together. And as you described it, they're going to send it to you to collate and prepare. And, but they can't copy other members of the subcommittee. So, because that'd be a deliberation. So it can only be sent to the one person. And as far as what comes out of that meeting, then the question is whether the full school committee simply accepts that or reviews it themselves. They could review it themselves at the open meeting. But then, of course, everyone's gonna know the question.
Well, and I'm more concerned, not so much the questions. I mean, they, they could take the questions and go into executive session to talk about the evaluate, or the, the, the rubrics and what they'll be looking for. Certainly if that's done in open session, anybody can.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that in executive session because if you think of the criteria to go into executive session, that's not one of the criteria. A screening committee can meet in executive session, but when you get to finalists, it has to be done in open session. So one way you could do it is to say, and you'd be interviewing the candidates that night? With the full school committee?
No, no, this, I'm sorry. The, the screening committee would finish their, their part of the work by putting together the rubrics and the questions. That would be given to the school committee on Thursday prior to them beginning the interview. My, my concern or question was, does the committee feel they'll have enough time?
Screening committee would meet on Wednesday, the day before.
Right, but the screening committee, is the screening committee going to be actually interviewing those two candidates? No.
No.
You're just developing questions and.
And the rubrics.
Well, the only way you could do that, if you did it with the full school committee, is the same way you did it with the subcommittee, which is, this is what we've come up with and if you think something should be added or deleted, send it back to me. But they can't copy everyone else because that's a deliberation.
All right, let me process what you're saying because I don't think I'm quite.
So you're saying the subcommittee is going to put together the questions and the rankings, you know.
I'm gonna put together questions, they're gonna give me their feedback on how they would evaluate those questions. I'll put that document together in a spreadsheet.
And so typically what happens is that once, and you've done this many times because you were superintendent for a long time, is the screening committee then, with that information, will interview candidates. And then after they interview the candidates, then they come forward to the full school committee with however many they bring forward. Let's say it's three. And you indicate that this is the process that we use. This was the ranking by the subcommittee. And then the full school committee then considers that, asks questions and votes.
Right. So what's different, and, and that's how I had originally set this up. Because as you know, generally you would have, you know, eight, nine, ten applicants. Certainly school committee's not gonna do that. So the search committee's job is to, is to screen at that first stage who they feel would be a good candidate for the district and, and bring that forward. However, where there are only two candidates that would meet the criteria in order to begin this process, and that's why, that was one of our conversations, we decided, let's move those two forward. The school committee can at least do those two. And we'll see if there are additional ones. And the thought process was at that point, if, let's say we had eight or nine more people that all of a sudden because of the salary, whatever, became inter, became interested, then we would fall back to continuing the process.
So when you bring the two forward before the school committee, they aren't actually gonna make a determination on those two, simply interviewing because it could be other candidates. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what my intent was. Because, well, that could be open for discussion. I would think that'd be the fair process to do. But what's, let's say the school committee interviews two and they find one that they feel is the right fit. Does the committee have the, the authority to say, even though they put it out there and they have some other, to say, no, we're, we're, we think we found our candidate? Or are they oblivious?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes what happens is you bring the two candidates forward to the school committee and you've done this internal screening ranking process of those two. And you bring forward the two candidates and you say, you know, the subcommittee determined one or the other person as, the person that was, had the highest ranking for the subcommittee, or not. The other way do it, and I would say this is more typical, if you only had two and you said you've done your screening, you have two viable candidates, you just bring them before the school committee and have them interviewed.
All right, I want to make sure that I'm clear on this because I, I don't know if I'm communicating this piece very well. So the way you're outlining it is, is the way we would normally do it. I think the distinction here is, is that the search committee, I, I shared with the search committee two met criteria for the most part, two did not. Was the search committee comfortable in not having another meeting screened through to bring through the two or move those two to the school committee? And that's what was decided at the search committee level.
Well, what they decided, they didn't want to move those two people forward.
Pardon?
So if you bring them forward and then the full school committee interviews them and they determine that they want to pick one or the other, or in the alternative, that they feel that the field is too slim and they want to have other candidates to interview as well, then they can do that. They would simply say, you'll be part, automatically part of this next pool, but we feel as though we need more candidates than just two brought forward.
And that was the strategy, to do this concurrently so that we would post it, we'd put the salary out, but we begin the process at the school committee level. I think what would be different then is, is that those two candidates came and the school committee vetted them. And if we had three or four, or five, well, let's say five or six come forward, what would now be different is the search committee would be expanded as I had indicated here and then would interview with the questions and vet them.
You probably have to re-interview the other two people because they're being asked different questions.
Okay.
And you have a different screening committee.
Okay. That's a good.
So I, I think what you would do is you bring the two forward, see if one of the two is selected. If the full school committee says, it sounds great, but we want more candidates. This isn't enough. So then you would expand your screening committee. You would advertise to get additional candidates. These two people would be called back to the new screening committee and interviewed along with any other potential candidates.
That sounds good.
And I've seen that occur, you know, in other places.
The intent of this would be though tomorrow, we'd be posting, reposting the position with that salary.
Right.
And we haven't interviewed yet, but we're, we're gonna post it so we concurrently get that process going.
Right.
Okay.
And you may not need to complete the process if the school committee. And you may not need to complete the process if the school committee chooses one of the first two applicants.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that's, I think we want to save everyone from doing double work, you know, so it, that sheds some interesting light. Um, should we just wait and see, I mean, give it us pretty quick turnaround time, um, how many more applicants we get with the salary posted, and then, you know, I hate to bring two people forward if we're not willing, if we know right now we're not willing to hire either one without seeing more candidates, and then we have to do the whole process again with the first two. But that's just.
And that's not uncommon either. So uh, that, in that particular approach, you just say the two, you know, you're viable candidates, but the school committee wanted a broader field for the screening committee to examine. Uh, because, let's say you get seven or eight candidates, and then the screening committee will then bring forward.
Right.
A more limited number. And sometimes the school committee will even say, uh, you know, we'd like to interview from the screening committee a minimum of three individuals. Three qualified individuals or four qualified individuals. Two to four.
So I saw Robin's hand, then Stephanie's?
Oh, sorry. I know.
David's. Okay, Robin, go ahead.
I know you're trying to like rush the process, but and I, I don't know, like you, you say this happens all the time, but quite personally, if I interviewed for the job and then was told I was gonna have to yet interview a second time, because I, I think, why can't we just post the job, wait a week, it's, it's just a week, and if we have to, then we'll just have to meet the first week in August and do the interviews and separate it out. And that way, you might get seven applications in your screening committee, but none of them might meet the criteria that you have.
And we may find that once we tell them tomorrow what the salary is.
Right.
We may not have uh, any candidates. So I mean.
Am I not understand the one other thing, if, if he changes the screening committee for, if you change the screening committee now for the next round, then do you have, for, like, I, I thought you said that if these two candidates that you've already kind of ready to pass on to us, if you then change your screening committee.
Why would we do that?
I don't know, I thought you said you were gonna expand that.
It was the questions.
Oh, okay. Oh, the questions, okay. So if you don't change the questions and you just stay the same, um, then you could advance everybody for like the first week in August or something. And that way, it wouldn't be so repetitive. Just, I hate to see you guys do extra work, too, because it seems like double the work for you.
Well, we were concerned about the timeframe. We're, we're, we're a week away.
Right, but.
Or less, you know.
Quite honestly, what's another, at this point, what's a week?
Yeah, we could do either, either way. Uh, I think the thinking was, is that the committee probably would want to get the process started.
Right, right.
And this is the reason why I asked the attorney, could you please stay for this section, because we're gonna have some conversations that I want to make sure that I understand, because um, so.
Yeah, see, the part of it where I said you would, the persons would have to go back to the screening committee, is if the composition of the screening committee changes. You had members of the board selected a finance committee.
Right.
Because otherwise, if they aren't re-interviewed by that group, then there isn't a level playing field.
Mm-hmm.
And that could, could result in discrimination charges based upon who you hired.
And that's what I was addressing.
So they have to all be from the same uh, level playing field.
David, you had your hand raised.
Um, yeah, on the one hand, uh, I think that if we got two qualified candidates, given my understanding of the marketplace for town uh, accountants and business managers, we're doing very well. Um, my town ended up having to hire a CPA firm, and on our $2 million budget, we're paying $50,000 for essentially school business manager. They're, they're, you know, functionally very, very similar jobs. Secondly, I think that we ought to seriously investigate the consulting firm uh, solution for near term. And I think one advantage could be that if they have somebody that's highly competent, that they can do the job more quickly. And if they are a big enough house, they could scale to our needs, not necessarily we hire a full-time person. And so it might be that we could, you know, that we might be paying on the basis of $150,000 a year full-time, but get somebody for 60% at $80,000 and save money and have somebody highly qualified. So let's do, look at that, um, because of the, uh, you know, if we get somebody good in here, we'll, we'll definitely keep them busy. But whether it's work appropriate for that pay scale would, would be my question. And then, finally, I think we should seriously consider sharing business manager. I have become pretty impressed by Gil Montague's business manager, uh, at the same time increasingly uh, impressed with Tanya in, in her dealings with, with the sixth town. And um, that, that ought to be looked at. And I intuit that, what's her name, Alan?
Joanne.
Joanne, I, did Joanne, well, that didn't take intuiting. She was pretty negative to the idea of, of combining, and I think she's got some openness now. And we should, we should pursue that, and we should talk to other, other districts.
Yep.
Because there's a, you know, vast uh, range of experience.
Yep.
I'm not getting any better at, at my job, but I've been doing it so long, I'm still pretty good at it. And so we might, but we might be able to right-size and get.
Okay, uh, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I think that once the posting changes with the salaries and those people are called, you're gonna know if you have candidates still or not.
Right.
That's, that's a key, big key.
Yeah.
105 to 125, and they're gonna make a decision probably tomorrow if they're gonna, interested to move forward. So that, that'd be number one. Um, the uh, companies that also do this, solutions or whatever they, the ones that do Greenfield or Mohawk, um, that's another option. Uh, the, as far as looking at uh, merging or consolidating or going in with somebody else, I'm not a big fan of that. Um, because I, there's more, there's more involved with that than I think that most people realize. I think that's part of a bigger picture. And that also, that bigger picture is gonna be part of how our kids are educated. And going in with some other district with one piece, when there's a bigger uh, thing being worked on right now with the sixth town committee, uh, I'd like to see them finish their job and make their recommendation. But if we start piecemealing it, then I think we lose our leverage to improve the kids' education. Um, yes, you're gonna save money, but what are we gonna do to improve the kids' education? Um, the merger, if it does happen, there's gonna be questions. How is this, how is saving money here gonna improve our education of our students? That's what I'm looking at. I want to make sure that whether we do one piece of it, whatever the regional committee recommends, if they uh, say we're gonna save money here, but where are we improving on the education? I think that's a big part of this, that, that piece. So I wouldn't be so inclined to uh, be in favor of merging or consolidating with somebody else.
There'd be sharing, Mike.
Or sharing, whatever.
It's very different, but I can see how it could be perceived as the camel's nose in the tent of, of.
Yeah.
Yep, Alan's.
So um, just two quick thoughts. One of them is, is that uh, if that were to materialize, what we may find is, that's the only thing that makes the most sense, you know, for, for the districts, is to share, to share uh, just those functions. Um, I don't know, because we, we haven't done it. I want to be careful, because I've done limited research on the systems that are out there that come into districts. Um, and my limited review seems to indicate that they're very specific, and they take care of financial things like accounting and payroll and, and uh, you know, processing warrants and so forth. But the oversight, uh, we've got to be careful, because I, I'm wondering if the oversight of the various people in the um, central office, food service and so forth, I'm not sure they do that. Um, I know you've worked with a number of.
Yeah, I have worked with a number of them. Um, and, you know, some school systems like them very much, and others have reservations. So I can't say that the report card is universal on that. Um, and uh, I'm not really sure why some school systems love them and some hate them. But that is what I've seen pretty much across the state. There aren't too many that do it. So uh, I think I know the very few companies that do it. And I don't have any issue with any of them, but I know some of the school systems did.
So those would just be two stones to turn over and, and see. In the meantime, I think the, the gist of people is to see if we can find someone that is a good fit.
Yeah, I would start with that.
Yeah. So we can do this concurrently, in case uh, we don't get any other applicants or.
And you can look, you know, you can look at other options if that doesn't occur. I mean, the most immediate is you do bring in a company, because they can probably come in in two weeks' time.
So, to come full circle, I think we need to go back and answer this question. Does the committee want to inform the can, have the candidates informed of the, the cost and so forth, and just bring them up to speed that we're re-advertising, so that the salary is out there? And then we will be um, uh, interviewing at that point, and, and um, or do we want to bring two candidates forward that the committee would interview next week, and make a determination if you want to bring other, have the screening committee bring forward additional candidates? So I think that, that was the pathway that we actually started talking about early this evening.
What's the committee's recommendation, your subcommittee's recommendation?
To bring two candidates forward.
Okay. Then I support your recommendation.
This, this was a really good conversation, so I, I'm even torn, because there's so, so many good thoughts out there.
David?
I agree, we should work with these two candidates, and, and I think that we should then, if these, if neither of these are acceptable, I think we should seriously look at a firm, because um.
Out of time.
Yeah, well, we, we need to get something in motion, and, and, and Greenfield's doing it, Mohawk's doing it. We tried doing it with this combined business manager superintendent, and it didn't work. And it took us, we voted to have a full-time business manager, and it took us a year or more before we got there. And we would have been better off had we spent money we didn't have at that time on it. So I'm real worried about us taking a lot of time at this, in this, um, uh, the, the reason I raise my hand is, anybody who's competent for this job knows the salary range for the job. They don't need to read it in the newspaper. They know.
Uh, yeah, Attorney Dupree, did, did you, what, what you had just quietly said, um, in the posting that we're doing tomorrow, should we also include um, language to open up the process of, in, I don't know what the wording would be, maybe you could suggest some, uh, and or uh, whatever they're called, management systems or whatever, to be invited to uh, apply?
Uh, you could do that, but the management systems, you can just pick up the phone and call them. So you don't have to do that.
There's no procurement standard for that kind of.
I don't believe so. Um, I'd have to look under the um, code as to the type of occupations where you don't have to go through the procurement process. Like attorneys, you don't have to. They have a list of like 15 different occupations that you don't have to. And uh, um, business consultings uh, may be in that and they may not. But my memory is that um, school systems just call them in.
Well, maybe you do it on a month-to-month basis, and then it's under $25,000 or.
Uh, but that, that can be easily checked. But my memory is the school systems that have brought them in have contacted them, they've done a contract with them.
Okay.
And they haven't gone through a procurement process. So that's my memory, but I'd have to double-check it.
Karen?
Yes, I'd like to ask Attorney Dupree, if these uh, management firms that you referred to, not, there are not very many of them, are they specialized to do educational finances? That is, do they?
Absolutely.
They are. So they know about the CARES Act and the American Recovery Act and those things, and those fiscal cliffs that are involved in that and so forth?
Yeah, they're, they're experts on all of that. They do it statewide. Uh, they know all the laws and regulations. Uh, I, it, it's never been a lack of knowledge by any school system that preferred a different approach.
Mm-hmm.
It's either how much time they could commit to the school system.
I see.
Having their own employee rather than a contracted service. Uh, but they have all the basic knowledge and understandings. And in fact, their staff, uh, I'm, virtually everyone on their staff actually worked in school systems at some point.
Okay.
So I would say they're, you know, it'd be municipal and uh, school systems, but I would say more so school systems and even municipal.
Thank you.
Um, so do we need to have a vote to move the two candidates forward on Thursday to interview if they, tomorrow, um, are still.
We have some.
Right.
Yeah, so, most, yeah, a motion is. Vote.
Okay.
So I remove that, but we um, move the two candidates forward per the recommendation of the search committee.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that passes. Oh, sorry, Mike?
Um, so uh, maybe to, as Alan's uh, says, uh, maybe to run parallel, maybe we ought to make a phone call or two, and, because we may need somebody temporary, if we can't have somebody start until like September.
You can find out their general availability.
If we can get somebody to uh, you know, come in and start if we need them, and what their start date would be, you know, what their availability is, uh, just so we're not left in limbo while we're working on this.
Right.
I have done some preliminary, um, as I shared with you, the subcommittee. I talked to the person from TMS, there in Greenfield and Mohawk, and he said he has 15 people, and he could take us on. I did not say how long. I said it could be a few months, it could be longer, we don't know. And he said he could.
Yeah, the owner isn't.
Andy Poccat?
Andy, I know Andy Poccat extremely well. I've worked at TMS in literally a dozen locations.
Yep.
So they're very well-known. They would be number one, TMS.
So, we also talked about, we also talked about, um, or you had mentioned that Tanya had offered to help out in a short transition.
Yeah.
Or, John did.
I talked, yeah, Tanya's willing, she's limited hours, but um, if we hired her as a subcontractor up to so many hours a week until we had somebody in place, and even if we, if you decided that you wanted to keep her for some transition period to be available, she would be willing to do that.
TMS will also do transition-type services, so, but, you know, either one is an option.
All right, um, the, something for the committee to um, think about.
There was a vote.
Yes, there was a vote.
Yeah. Something for the committee to think about. There may be questions uh, in the interviewing process that the candidate's act, uh, asks, that's specific to the finances, whether it be how we convert information from our system to the um, end-of-year reporting on the function codes of the department vid and so forth. So you might want to um, schedule Tanya to maybe be available by phone or something, so that if, if the candidate asks a question, um, you know, that's not your expertise.
Right.
And I wouldn't expect you to be able to answer some of those rig, detailed things. Um, you have her available, that might, ju, just, just to answer any questions that the candidate has regarding our financial uh, situations.
You know, I just thought of something else when you were um, saying that. The candidate could also ask. The candidate could also ask us as school committee questions. And so would we have one spokesperson? Would we all try to jump in?
No, yeah.
Or would you do it? Or...
Generally, the way that's set up is one per, you know, you have the water on the table, you know, you make the person feel comfortable, you ask them a fairly simple question at the beginning of what's not on your resume that you'd like us to know, and a, you know, a short answer, so, so they can just get used to talking a little bit. You would assign who's going to ask what question, and then, but a point person would be the one doing that. You'd have a pen there, you'd have some note cards, so if they wanted to listen to the question and jot some notes. And so all of those logistic kind of things, you'd, you'd have ready to go and set up during your, your hour in preparation. And then that way, the, the, generally, a person writes their name down next to the next question, they don't have to be called on, but, and, and the candidate will usually be looking at the person that asked them the question. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just was wondering.
Okay.
How we as a school committee is going to handle that.
Yeah. So you'd have to decide that, who's going to, who's going to be doing that.
I want to stay on track, it's 9:00 PM. I'm tired.
So moved.
So, are you, are you...
Well, I just, I just had, the laws have changed a little bit in terms of what you can ask and what you, you know, can't ask, and why I have you here, you know, maybe you could address that, since the committees, you know, would be asking questions and things that, you know, that, that you have to stay away from, like, how much do you make and things?
I, I think our office actually has a list of what you can and cannot ask. And so I would have someone like Kim Roach or Russell actually send the most recent updates on that, because as you correctly indicated, they change it periodically. But that's information we generally supply to school systems, so someone in our office...
So could he get that to Joanne, and she could disseminate it to everyone here to know what the parameters are?
Russell's off tomorrow, I'm working.
Sorry, I asked.
So someone will get it to you on Monday.
Okay.
Mike?
I assume, are we under other business now, or are we still in business now?
Yeah, I want to make sure, so anything else, Alan?
I really appreciate the conversation we had. I'm going to go back to, you know, Robin, what you had said earlier. This, this seems like a nice functioning conversation when we either disagree, or we're supporting each other, or sharing thoughts. I enjoyed this meeting.
Yeah, it's not what I was used to in the past. If you're done with me, I'll leave a little note.
So we can move on to other business. Thank you, Attorney Dupree. So Mike, you can go ahead.
I just had one quick question. I had one of the towns' finance members ask, they just wanted to know, maybe, I don't know if you talked to Russell at all about the district agreement to...
Yes, I have.
See where, if you could just give us a brief update, and then she's probably watching.
I actually got a call from Brian Snell from Warwick today, because when I asked Russell about the Warwick interim, no, what are we calling it? Not interim. Transition. I'm tired, too. He said it never went to Warwick after our meeting in what, April or May? Did we have that meeting, Karen?
Well, we got it yesterday.
And so, yes.
Recently.
So he was very appreciative that he got it, and they will send it to their lawyer and get back to us. He didn't think it was going to take that long, but who knows how long lawyers take. And then the other thing was the district agreement that I talked to Russell about, and he sent me Michelle Griffin's questions from Desi. So the district agreement should, the district agreement, the district agreement committee should get together again, because there's a lot of things here. Well, Julie, you would have seen it. And Mike, did you see it? Was it CC to you?
Nope, I don't think so.
So she did have comments about Warwick, and so I think we need to get together. With all these meetings, I don't know when we'll get together, but... Aren't you on it, Alan?
I think I am.
Yeah, you are. Who's on? Oh, Robin, you're on it. Who else is on it?
I'm on it.
I'll have to look at my email. But we do need to get together to discuss this, because there's quite a few things here. And that's it. Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay.
There's no time frame for that, do we have to do it this month?
Well, we need to get it to the towns. It keeps going back and forth, and...
Right, the towns aren't going to be able to act on this if we're talking about the district agreement until next town meeting. Not a special, not a regular one, so there, it's May.
It might take them that long.
Yeah, but it's the kind of thing you want to rule out.
Oh, absolutely.
You want to do it in September's...
And I, and I have had, you know, the Northfield Finance Committee Chair reach out and ask as to the status of it, so I was reassuring her that I would get an update, so that work is important.
Yeah, I think August is tough, you know, what a vacation and all that, so. I'll send out an email.
So I just want to, any other business? Just wanted to confirm, so on our agenda here, it says next meeting will be July 29, 2021, 7:00 PM. Right, so the subcommittee will meet, the, you used a couple of different terms. So the Business Administrator Search Subcommittee will meet on Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 28th, at...
5:00.
5:00. And then our committee, we would need to change the time...
To 6:00.
To 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 29th. So I just wanted to make sure I was correct, so I'll, I'll let Joanne know.
And that will be available on Google Meet, right?
So I, I want to discuss that, I want to discuss that as well. This was not set up to be a hybrid meeting, it was set up just in person. We've all been, I know, feeling that this has gone really well this evening. I do think that, you know, but that's just my personal opinion, that it works better in person.
Yeah.
However, if it would mean that someone could join that wouldn't be able to be here physically, you know, do we want to have a combination, always offer the hybrid option?
I think we should offer it, because even, like, I know somebody said, well, citizens want to come. Well, some citizens don't want to come. They don't want to come to a place and be inside yet, and personally, I don't know, I, I like the option. I really, I'm usually, like all of us, running around like crazy.
So Alan and then Karen.
All right, so I guess I'm going to disagree in that.
Okay.
I think it's really important for us and for the candidates to see face-to-face, where we can read body language, where we can see what's going on, and that, and that we actually do in person. And that made me think of, we need to ask the candidate, John, if they're okay with meeting in person, that we're planning on meeting with them in person, and so, because some of them may say, whoa, no, I, you know, for whatever reason. So I, that triggered, we should be respectful and ask the candidate, are they okay with meeting in person?
Well, I can't, I can't do the 29th here, physically, but I, I would be able, I would be willing to Google Meet from where I am.
Karen and then David.
Yes, I agree for this meeting with the candidates, it's important to be there in person. However, I think with the way things have been shaping up, I haven't felt like I could go anywhere on vacation, because we're meeting in person again, and also, we have a member who's ill now and might want to participate, but might be unable to come. So I think there should be a way for people with exceptional circumstances to be able to continue to participate.
Thank you. David?
I agree, we ought to offer the hybrid option, and I would note that, you know, the reward for being here, I think, is a much more effective presence. So, but in order that people can travel, you know, sometimes just the half-hour to here and a half-hour home makes all the difference as to whether I might make a meeting or not.
Right.
I understand that. I also want to, I wasn't at the last meeting because I was on vacation with my family, and it killed me. I had, the hybrid option was available, and I struggled so much with that. No, but it's also very important that we spend our vacation time actually relaxing. So I don't want the hybrid option to have people feel like, well, even though I'm on vacation, I should still attend, because I really struggled with that, I have to say. So please respect your own, I consider this work-life balance. You know, we just have to make sure that we unplug as well, so.
Good choice, and Mike did okay.
And I thank Mike.
He was great, yeah.
So for full disclosure, one of my problems is that six months ago, there's a huge family event happening in Indiana, that I would be flying out of here August 7th and returning on August 17th. And I was thinking of, jeez, if I'm in the middle of this, I either have to cancel it or maybe cut it short. So I'm, I'm struggling with, I haven't made the phone call, because I wanted to see how, how this is going to go forward, but...
This is going to be here, your family may not, seriously. Hopefully that's not the case.
Hope they're vaccinated.
Yes, everybody.
Michelle?
I just wanted to ask, on Thursday, the candidates will be first, even if Tanya's done with her budget stuff, right?
Oh, yeah.
We'll bring the candidates in first?
Yep.
And, okay, because we can go on and on, the candidates could be sitting there until eight or nine.
No, that's, that's a great point.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's also why we wanted to limit it to, well, we feel like there are, out of the applicants, there were two that met the criteria, but we also don't want to interview five people in one night in a 45-minute interview. That's not good for anyone either.
And, and you have to even figure out, like, who's going to greet them, and give them a little, and keep them busy, you know, someone perhaps from your staff, you know, can greet them at the door, sit down with them. You don't want to have candidates passing, you know, each other, so one would come in one place, one would go out a different door. So there's all those kind of little, you don't think about it, you know, little logistics that you are trying to work out, so they feel comfortable and they're not in an awkward situation. So I, I can review all that.
Okay.
Review, John.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
No.
All right, we have adjourned. Yes, thank you very much.